All right, prior to the second session. We ask that each resident hold their comments in three minutes. We will gather you after three minutes. So everybody else has the opportunity to do it. We'll publish the results.
I'm here. Mrs. Yu.
Here.
Mrs. Iver.
Here.
Mr. Teddy.
Here.
Mrs. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Zabrowski.
Here.
Mr. B.
Here.
Mayor Noack.
Here.
Mr. Furman is not participating. We have Mr. Roberts standing in his place. And Mr. Osmond.
Here.
Thank you. All right, prior to citizens' requests, we know that, uh, I know you people are here this evening maybe with the West Club issues, so I would like our engineer to address that issue on the deck as well as the side.
Um, is this a summary of where we are? I had a report for council at the last meeting. Uh, our office has completed the research of available bucket documents, uh, recorded plans and deeds. So we've identified, uh, two options for council to consider in comparison time and provide them with cost estimates, uh, for those two options. The first option is to extend the storm sewer from the existing sewer on Curry Road, uh, along the property lines, uh, forty-six fifty-five, nineteen West Club, thirty-two West Club, and forty-six twenty-nine, uh, Curry Road. Construct storm outlets at the terminus of West Club Drive and essentially, uh, connect the system, uh, there. In our research, uh, easements will be required from those four owners that I just mentioned just to extend that sewer from Curry to West Club Drive. Tree clearing will be required to physically construct, uh, that storm sewer. Constructing the storm sewer, the swell, uh, could be eliminated. There's no requirement of altering need for it. The second option that I mentioned was to do all of the first option and extend storm sewers, uh, up West Club Drive and make out the necessary pavement improvements and curb improvements essentially bringing up to, uh, our estate fees. Uh, however, that option would require new receivements and improvements from the adjoining property owners. There is an agreement in place from nineteen seventy-two, the residents of West Road, the whole drive, that the roadway would not be driving any further or any wider than it is now and those storm sewers would not be constructed. So, um, estimates are on front of council or consideration of the budget needs. There would be extensive work that would be needed, uh, and agreements discussed from the residents. Those budget needs will take place within the next, uh, very soon, it is.
What are you going to speak to? I would, I would, uh, talk about what you've been involved in. Like, one more speaker, sure. Barton Spencer, Turner, twelve Turner Drive, Whitehall. Uh, this is the project that I got, uh, that I was, uh, got, talked into about three or four months ago. My, actually about five, six months ago. My initial reaction was just to come up to council and start galling the stream and, you know, get it done, blah, blah, blah. But I did, I had done it, an awful lot of research and study on this, more than, more than I care to talk about because one of the reasons I never ran for Whitehall Council is because I'm truly not interested in the roads, the sewers. I'm not interested. It doesn't move education. That was my question. I, I've worked with, uh, Mayor Noack over the months to try to get something done. It's not moving as fast as it should. Government never does. Uh, the county, I had a verbal agreement with a deputy, uh, Public Works guy, and he's an old timer who, you know, I mean, twenty-five years ago, I would have called Tom Forrester, Scott, Harry Kramer, and in twenty-four hours, it would have been done. Today, nothing gets done because too many bureaucrats are walking around and everybody's afraid to make a decision. So after four meetings with him, I said to John Paul Mary, and none of this would be getting done without John Paul Mary. Because they couldn't care less about me, okay? Doesn't matter if you're chairman, doesn't matter if you're, you care about the issues, that doesn't matter. But Paul Mary is the county councilman and they have to sort of give him some respect. Not as much as it should. So anyway, I said to John, we're wasting time. All we do is meet with deputies. I need the director. So finally, the director decided to show up after all his vacations and time off, and he and about eight other people from the county. There was a couple million dollars worth of personnel on West Club Drive. Their sole purpose was to come and say no. And there's this no way, I'm accepting no for an answer from them or anybody else on this project. And, and I'll be interested in looking at your, your thing, and I'm glad you have options for the council. The, the bottom line is, the director goes, well, I don't know, I don't think he needs some blah, blah, blah. And they have a deputy with a hundred pages of why it shouldn't be done. Well, finally, the chief of staff of, this is how ridiculous this project has become. The chief of staff of Sarah Emmeraugh, uh, his name is Grant something. I've known him for years. He's a political operative and he's very, he's a very nice guy. Thank God he showed up because, you know, it was, it was not a good meeting. I told the director, if you can't make a decision on something as small as that, you should be fired immediately. And I told the deputy that also. I mean, how ridiculous it is for them to have constituent services. Grant gave me his, Grant gave me his word that would, that it will be done. I'm going to give them thirty days to get it done, or Mr. Paul Mary is going to introduce a motion to county council for one lousy damn storm sewer. That's how ridiculous that project. And, and Grant admitted, and so did some of the others, that fifteen percent of the problem on West Club comes from the county road on Brownsville Road. So if we get that, it starts solving the problem, but that problem is much more than just Brownsville Road. It has to be done and done right. And just, and a quick aside, when Ralph Geiger was the state rep years ago and they were doing that eighty-eight fifty-one project, I said, I said to Ralph, let's get it done right. Well, we're going to spend twenty-five million, but it would cost forty-five to do it right. To do it right. That project is, is, they've done almost nothing to ease the traffic now on fifty-one and eighty. Well, I'll be back next month and we'll see, continue this project and, uh, Bev Kells.
This is my first time doing this. I'm, my name is Bev Conrad Jones. I live at.
You state your residence, please.
One fifty-two Providence Way. I live in Grove Point. I'm here as a resident of Whitehall, a lifetime, called the Whitehall resident. I wanted to bring to your attention and ask for your advice and help, um, the hillside along Hamilton Road and the trail along Hamilton Road is something that has been, um, a problem for Grove Point for the, for the three years that we've been there. Um, the hillsides have been shifting and, um, this is something that we brought to attention to Grove or Penhoe and they either ignore that or say it's not their problem. Then, most recently, the new trail that they put in, which has recently been approved by the borough, whatever material that they're using has also washed away, just like the previous material has washed away. I have videos of the material washing down the hillsides. And you can see that the material is now in our yards. You can see where the hillside has shifted and I am not an engineer. I am an English teacher, so please forgive me if I don't use the proper terminology here. Whenever, if you, and I'm willing to share all these videos with all of you and all of the pictures. And if you do, you drive down Hamilton Road, you can see that they, they're clearly admitting that there's water issues because they put the sandbags all along Hamilton Road now. But if you walk along that trail, you can see where the water has, rolls off of that trail and just goes straight down the hillside. It never even makes an inch of a drain. And to me, what is curious about that is that where you see that the water has run down over the hillside, it's also where those hillsides have shifted over these past three years. Not an engineer, but that just kind of, I don't know, seems, seems to me that where the water runs straight down, the, the hillside has shifted. And like you said, I can show you, I'm willing to share with you the videos. I have a video during a rainstorm where you can clearly see it. And it mostly affects between, um, houses one hundred through one hundred and fifty-eight on Providence Way. In the one, um, one fifty-eight Providence Way, you can even see where, in one of the videos, where the water will pool at the bottom of the hillside and that land is kind of seen in their yard as well. So we're just here because we know that Grove Point or, um, Penhoe has not received their bond back. They're not done there and we just need, need your help to make sure that they fix that hillside and that trail and make sure that the water is not going to damage our homes.
Is that, Bev, you're not an engineer, too. We haven't had an engineer.
Forgive my English. Do you mind reaching out? But, um, to address the trail question, uh, trail support proposed, uh, the plan is to remove the developer elected to use reclaimed asphalt for the trail and that, uh, uh, trail mix, uh, as a, so they removed the asphalt for the, for the cemented asphalt, added the, the aggregate, moved the trail. I think it was last November, when we, when we, when we, uh, downed four on the Friday evening. That section of Hamilton Road is, uh, hurt. Just a lot of, uh, they did watch this. Representatives in Penhoe, they're, they're, uh, with, uh, a lot of project managers to a gall breath. He, uh, he would ask you, uh, what they're proposing to consider is, uh, replace the aggregate trail. We can all agree, so it is essentially involved through the sidewalk.
That third party is Jordan Tax Service. Jordan Tax Service charges these three hundred homes, the one I own and the rest of those people, they charge you the Alka-Sam rate. But the difference is, and I understand you probably did that legally, but the one thing they don't afford to them is a sewage credit. Alka-Sam, when I called them and I said, "What happens when you have extraordinarily high sewage bill?" We have a program, we've established your receipts. I give them my address and that's when I first learned. You're not on ours. I said, "See, you have a sewage credit." I called the borough and find out the bill. So it's gone back and forth. I've talked to Earl from you all through. And he's gotten back to me. I don't know if he's brought this to your attention or not.
Mike, yeah.
But it needs to be considered consideration.
Well, he, uh, Earl should be here next week.
Okay.
He's going to Wisconsin.
But I wanted you all to know, there's three hundred people here that aren't being treated the same as the rest of the community. And that is not fair. And along with that, the boroughs benefited from that contract with Pleasant Hills. Every, 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 uh, twice a year.
Okay. Let me, let me comment. So I'm surprised, Mike, to hear you say that, um, a better arrangement with Pleasant Hills than Alka-Sam. The reason why I say that, uh, I remember when the Borough Council finances were tight and they were going to treat the Pleasant Hills homes, they would have paid a higher rate than would Alka-Sam. And I, I remember, I've only vetoed a couple of ordinances, and that was one of them. Because my belief was that everybody in Whitehall should pay the same regardless of where their, you know, sewage goes. Where it goes, this place, that place, everybody should pay the same. So I vetoed that ordinance. They, I, I was overridden by council, but ultimately, they put it back in so that everybody is, you know, paying the same rate in the borough. So it's changed, uh, you know, I don't know when that would have occurred.
I, I'm not asking for change in the rate. Been paying whatever rate they apply to my bill, and it has been the same as the other residents. But when you talk about amenities and you're saying, "I'm in a situation where I have a six thousand dollar sewage bill, I'd like to get some help from the community since they're basically the sewage provider in this case." Uh, has been no consideration, but if my property was located anywhere else other than on Brownsville Road among those homes that are connected to that sewer line going Pleasant, Pleasant Hills, I would at least have a credit provided.
So what you're saying is, is that all Whitehall residents are not being treated equally with regard to a sewage credit?
Right.
Most Whitehall residents get a sewage credit, but, but you do not?
Probably ninety-eight percent get the sewage credit.
Mike, you can wait till next meeting. So you have more information.
Okay. But I don't, this, you can give a consideration.
I feel horrible. That is a pretty thing to happen, you know? And as a landlord, you can't go into the building. You have to give point four hour notice. So there was nothing you couldn't have been done.
It's just difficult gathering information. And while your company, it seems like Borough Manager has that access, other than that, they're not going to provide me with a report where I can study it further and see who else had this amount of volume of, you know? To see if there was something wrong with their equipment, and I sensed there was. But I couldn't have approved that. And that's why they were willing to work with me.
You've been hanging there long enough. Why don't you wait until another meeting and see what we can do?
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we're in good alignment. Let's go drive. Um, I'd like to address these two ladies here. We've been dealing with the water issue for twenty-four years, so don't lose sight of that. I hope you just won't think that long. Um, we're still dealing with the swell. We heard about today, the day possible removal and remove, fix the water problem, which is great to hear. Two different versions, A and B. My husband and I are agreement if we have to do something with our property, help out with storms. So we would do that to help the neighbors and getting rid of the swell in our area. Um, I'd like to thank Marty, Mayor, Scott, Beth, Scott, um, Stone and Rachel here. We're usually in listening to my concerns in meetings and outside of meetings and what you're trying to do to help us. And it's our hope, it sounds like we're getting closer each meeting that I come to, since this is my seventh in twenty-four years. I forgot to mention that at the beginning. And that something can be done in positive nature for our street and our neighbors and getting rid of the swell everywhere. So I'm hopeful with that. And then what Marty said about the people working on Brownsville. Third, I still, we, the people here, would like to have this room turned ninety degrees. I don't know why we're getting, uh, why we're fighting about this and why this can't be done. I mean, to make it so nobody's back towards, uh, towards the audience. And to do this, I think we'd say, well, you know what, Lori, you were right. Not only was I a teacher for thirty years, but also an interior designer prior, prior to that. So I do know about space planning. So, um, I'm going to take some inspiration and continue to be in positive nature with West Side Drive. My husband and I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Yeah, it's all I have. So you want to, you don't send it to me?
Okay, we're going to talk. I was on the phone. Fabian Smith, seventeen forty-one Park Farm, uh, possibly. The steps we condemn in Prospect Park and Wallace Park, I would like to see if we can get that on the agenda maybe before the end of the year. To deal with this space. And also, uh, the kids wanted to ask to see if, I know we had some issues with the soccer field that it wasn't left in a wet or whatnot. But the kids requested maybe if we can get some soccer goals. I know we have to talk to the baseball association. They, they seem to leave the property there to fill it. Maybe if some of the residents can get, um, access to the keys. Can we have events there from the borough? And we can hold the goals in the chairs, or whatnot for the kids, maybe? They also requested maybe if we can do a volleyball, not necessarily sand, but if we can maybe mark it out in the field. I have actually a video, uh, I can show you and our posts over kids' question or whatnot. Uh, and yeah, if we get those steps again, because the kids aren't, you know, kids are kids. So they're still trying to get down those steps. You don't want nobody getting hurt over those.
Appreciate the comments.
Tina, can I ask you a little question? Um, the soccer nets, have you already gone to BWSA to ask?
That is a good.
Okay. Got it.
Is there a phone number that you could, uh, contact information?
I mean, other than maybe what's on their like website or Facebook page, I don't have direct contact.
I might take you on a talk to you after the meeting.
Okay.
All right, gonna move on to Bill's payroll. Are you gonna let Mrs. Wirth do this this time?
Uh, administrative services, Mrs. Pugh.
In order.
Planning and zoning, Mr. Liette.
In order.
Public safety, Mr. E.
In order.
Public works, Mrs. Iker. In order. Recreation, Mr. Silverowski.
In order.
Library, Mrs. Thomas.
In order.
Storm sewer fund, Mrs. Iker.
In order.
Sanitary sewer fund, Mrs. Iker.
In order.
The capital project fund, Mrs. Pope.
In order.
Would ask for a motion to re-bill the bill listed September eighth, two thousand and forty-four from the general fund. Total three hundred thirty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and seventy cents. From the storm sewer fund, totally two thousand five hundred dollars and no cents. From the sanitary sewer fund, totally twenty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. And from the capital projects fund, totally six thousand three hundred twenty dollars and no cents.
So motions made, second, all three, set.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
And also ask for a motion to, uh, to modify checks and transfers from general fund in the amount of three, thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars and ninety-five cents. And from the payable fund, in the amount of sixty thousand, eight hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. For grand total renovation, in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Senator.
I would like to have it noted for the record that this is in accordance with the Public Works Union contract and not in accordance with the Whitehall Thorough Budget.
Okay, motion's made, second, all three, set.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
I would also ask for a motion to withhold the pay date of September sixth, two thousand and twenty-four in the amount of two hundred, one thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars and forty-two cents. For receiving forty-four cents.
Second. Okay, motion's made, second, all three, set.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Senator, is overtime was attached?
Thank you. Three more minutes. I've got a motion to three minutes in the last week.
I moved to three minutes from the, from the meeting of September fourth, twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Second.
Okay, motion's made, second, all three, set.
Aye. I would like to, um, discuss, and I know this is something small, and I, I appreciate that this has been added to, to the minutes as I had requested in our discussion last time. If, if it could be possible that the color version of this map be, be posted. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All three, set.
Aye.
All right, moving on to the other.
There's your part, my favorite. Yeah. And I won't try to give your, or your. All right, so first item I have is a saying that we do not have an annual report for August. And, uh, so you feel the chief is going to look into it, because these reports become a little slow. More slowly if that will be issued, so I can find out what's going on. Uh, restoration work continues on Baptist Road. Work continues to perform base curb and driveway repairs for another week. Uh, asphalt paving is technically scheduled for the first week of October. So concerned about Baptist Road, please share this information. Uh, the tenant is.
Mr. Mayor, clarification, I'm, or, or?
Uh, yes, yes. From Hamilton to.
Uh, progressively works this past week, so thank you for that excellent.
They are, they're working.
Seven to five?
Seven to five, seven beyond the five AM, mostly Monday through Thursday. What they're doing with the base repair, when they did the work, they have to dig that back up and make sure it has the proper base in it so that when they pave it, the road doesn't sink. And then they have to fix the curb cuts when they went into the properties to replace the lateral lines, and also when they put in new fire hydrants and shower floors. Solar resist down the E flashing light was stalled on the new stop signs along Casskey, W L Drive. The purpose was to alert motors, new signs, L E D lights were being removed by the hand of a worker. Is there a report from the Whitehall Fire Company, Skip Brown, Secretary?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And, and I'd like all our personal sympathies to the Fire Company's citizens and also the water.
Thank you.
Honored to know you're so chill. Okay, um, our fire call total for, uh, so far this year is four hundred eighty-six calls since December first. There's thirty-six calls since I gave the last report on August nineteenth. Uh, the shift crew responded to over fifteen daylight calls. Our current membership is still thirty-three active fire, uh, active firefighters. Uh, we've asked the residents to use caution when charging battery powered devices to not overcharge items such as power tools, scooters, laptop computers, non lithium battery powered products. When leaving your home, make sure those chargers are unplugged and check to make sure the batteries are being charged and online. Two weeks ago, over sixty people were left homeless in Brooklyn, New York City by someone who was not charging their scooter driver. Scooter's lithium battery fire destroyed apartment building. Cause me. Uh, these fires are difficult to put out. Uh, we have to use a special agent. Water does not work on them. I'm sure people have seen the fire fires. Same thing with greater good for the batteries. Our fund drive has received one thousand five hundred six donations in total, one hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred sixty-seven dollars. We have sent out a second reminder to homeowners, but not donated. There will be email blasts and social media posts. Last year at this time, we had a total of one hundred seventeen thousand, ten dollars with one thousand five hundred thirty group donors. So our revenue is up, our donations are slightly down at twenty-seven. So, so far this year is going to be less than, thank you for your help. Presently, we have an outdoor package, winner's choice package. This is a five hundred dollar Johnny will give the Amazon parts and a five hundred dollar alligator worms gift certificate. We're also doing instant watering tickets up for grabs on our Tifford site. So far, the instant watering tickets have been our most popular, uh, and fastest selling raffles. Uh, the fire company participated in touch and truck event on September eighth. Our new chief's vehicle is now in service. And just as a reminder, our next monthly meeting will be one week later on Monday, September twenty-third instead of the sixteenth because some people are on vacation. Not just myself.
Uh, can I ask, Skip, will there be a mailing to the businesses?
We, you already said a mailing, but we are, um, instead of sending the mailing, uh, we're going to hit like the higher volume businesses. Want to clarify that?
I can mention we have lithium batteries. That's a big issue with waste management as well. Batteries will be in spark.
Okay, we have two other, uh, items. One is that the Whitehall Restorative Society, uh, had an event in which John Delano spoke. Look around this room and see the head. He was fantastic. And I, you know, we all know what his position is, he's a big guy. Uh, but to show you how even balanced he was in his presentation, someone asked me, Jim, do you know what party John Delano is? I couldn't tell by his presence. And I think that speaks volumes for the caliber of the person that we have. So very honored to have him coming up in our program. You know, one misses is Tom McMillan talking about his book on Flight Ninety-Three. He did personal research, uh, because he, he had been writing books about, you know, Gettysburg. And of course, there's no original people around to be able to get the information. And so knowing that, he, he thought the story of Flight Ninety-Three should be told. And so he interviewed, uh, family members, you know, um, people that were involved with the, the, uh, plane on that day. And, uh, there's a number of revelations that you will hear about. I don't want to spoil this thunder, but misconceptions of public thought about that day that in his research. So, uh, how do you remember the date on that setup? Eric?
Uh, it's the third, I believe it's the second or third, uh, Thursday in the month. I don't have the date in front of me. I apologize.
Uh, check, uh, the website and, uh, and don't miss that presentation because, uh, you will, you will thank me the next time. Be followed, because I, you know, told you. All right, and lastly, um, appreciate Skip, your comments. And I want to thank Whitehall Police Department, Whitehall Electric officials, Whitehall Fire Company, the staff who came to the, to the funeral, all the cards that, you know, I ultimately have received. My father, he was a special guy and we honored him in two thousand and fifteen as Person of the Year. Um, he's worked in, you know, housing institutions all over the world, you know, the city of Pittsburgh. And, uh, I think we gave him a great send off, but thank you very much for all your, uh, prayers and so much compassion.
Any questions? Okay, I'll turn it back to the rest of the.
I was going to add something to the.
Not a question, but October twenty-fourth is the date. So thank you, Hannah.
Like you're making them part of it.
Thanks, Mr. President. We do have a, uh, recall for the council page on September thirteenth. We want to get to the touch on, uh, receiving on page two hundred, uh, section three of operation maintenance. For, uh, the residents of forty-two oh seven, the key drive have, uh, requested a backwater valve. We received all of the required documents, which we have signed a letter and understand. So to get into backwater valve installed, uh, soliciting proposals from, uh, three hundred contractors. Only two were received, the root or service companies submitted a bid of fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Soul Life Construction submitted a bid of fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. So the recommended motion is to award, uh, the forty-two oh seven, the key drive backwater valve to the root or service companies with an amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars in use.
Senator, second.
Motion carries. Second, all three, set.
Aye.
On item four, I think we should, uh, the one part, uh, is the, the council and other, uh, first Americans to cover handle electric control climate systems have figured all of their questions, ladies. Call of the contract, um, started work on, making gracious in the asphalt part in area of this wing. And they are, uh, working to, uh, have their main essential, um, mailing installed on the stairway. So if all goes well, uh, the project, uh, we will, uh, we are working with them, but they took the root measures stairs. If, uh, fabrication could be able to come up. So at that time, they're working. So at that time.
Overlook, you know, I've been harping on this, folks. Possibly open, like for the next two weeks.
Yes. So Callister submitted a, uh, pay application number nine. It's in orders. We recommend approval of that, uh, pay application. What completed under this pay app number nine, obviously included the landscaping, the restoration, excavation, uh, storm, sewer work handrail, uh, uh, several supervision. So the recommended motion is to approve pay application nine to be about thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars, twenty-six cents for dealing with, uh, with the contract under my general construction to Callister Contracting Services, including, so check for the same amount required.
I have a quick question. Yes, um, I, I think I heard that you said that the, you mean to parking area of over what Clarkwood, you done? I think that you meant, um, restaurant walkway?
No, I meant the, the parking lot. The pavilion was previously created. However, uh, there's spots for it, and by, such as the old colors, that have to be addressed, required on the lower, uh, uh, platform. So that asphalt is, uh, contracted a bit, uh, after those two measures made to, uh, section of the other parking lot. Uh, where they see the entire parking area has structure.
So you're saying that there's an upper parking lot and an overlap park?
Well, it would be the parking lot, uh, since you didn't, you didn't structure it, you question it. There's only one parking lot.
Uh, you mean there was only one parking space?
The by two, let's call it the by two in this area.
Oh, okay. All right, sure. Um, for, for those who do not know what that word is, I had to look it up recently. It means an, an asphalted area.
Motion's made, all three, set.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Uh, just a quick update on page three. The page two, uh, improvements for a little bit, because there, uh, the bids, uh, we've, uh, the bidding will be off to the light. Uh, under number ten, under the construction. So only one bid was received in the bidding on September eleventh. B and R Hools and Swims Shop submitted a base bid price of one hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars and an alternate bid price of five thousand, eight hundred dollars. Uh, the bid received, uh, since the first public project, that was actually a national report for the week. We recommend that base bid, although it may be rejected, uh, project be advertised. So recommended motion is to reject the bid received from the R Hools and Swims Shop, re-advertize the project. What makes a bid? But, but, yes. So for instance, uh, two recent footprints of the projects that they, um, been due, um, on the eastern side, as I say. Uh, those prices were slightly larger than what you had, uh, in range of twenty-five, a whole three thousand dollars. So Mainline was a contractor who, uh, provided information on the food cover liner, food cover, uh, materials to us or respected elements at the stage of the project. They did not, uh, submit it. However, they shared with us that their cost were, uh, food cover, this application, which we, uh, types that we expect or food cover, the material cost, uh, thirteen thousand, that was twenty-two thousand, so it's accessible.
So comparison, so that company that spec eighteen thousand, this company that put in a bid said they're, am I reading this correctly?
Install prices, one hundred thirty-two.
Right, but they're, they're just material prices of eighty-nine thousand R S. The other company had said eighteen thousand. So everybody understands why you're rejecting this grossly large bid?
Yeah, it's, what is, why is the bid so high? Is it because of the odd shape in the pool or anything? Does, does Brentwood have a, a, is it, I know there's a pool that's tall, not that.
I am not certain. My people contact, uh, they don't, uh, type of those would be so.
I'd like to suggest, we, we're thinking about this. It kind of came up, I mean, it sounds like a really good idea. Felt we could save some money by not draining the pool and replacing it. But there are some questions about, who still has to be winterized, we, what's this? How do you look to match the, the, is that by what fact? Or those hooks or whatever you're going to put the cover on, it's going to be there all summer long. I, I just have some questions that I would like to have answered. Would be moving that, that.
You can start to clarify that. There were people that he just, uh, fast, they were installed. But, um, I believe there was a probably a hose over the opposite, because it's kind of like a bad. We, uh, we.
Level, it might. No, I just, I'd like to hear a little more about it. Anyway, I about to.
We, we didn't anticipate that. All right, uh, so, and, and a motion. Motion. So move. So. Okay, we set. The, 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 revisit this at every time.
On page four, uh, the council where it was, uh, so, yes, which we decided we did out on October night. And then one item that I did not listen to was the, uh, water tank. Uh, I did expect that, uh, the, uh, the twelve foot process, uh, the, 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 the tank is in good shape. Well, it's, it's good this morning. I was expecting, uh, we will go up there, we will have to, uh, with, uh, uh, the, uh, the, uh, actual.
The first item one is to request your first on staff. Uh, if you can, uh, against a, like, uh, the, uh, the, the, the council, consider raising conversation and position of past, uh, uh, from coming in charge of such change to, uh, to, uh, and this twelve months, it dates from last May and we done, uh, so council will, uh, request, uh, those, those, uh, and, and as motion.
Question, uh, particularly right on to raising salary, but, um, in terms of the tax collector as well, with issuing property tax refunds, um, one of the most probably kind of going up. We had budgeted thirty thousand for refunds this year, which I mean was a lot higher than we'd issued. And so far this year, we've given a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in refunds, so they're collecting less and giving more to that, which is, um, what's the tax code for?
Is this? Assessment, so reassessment is happening at the county after having information given to the tax collector. That is saying, mail-in entry versus, um, there's quite a, a lot of administrative work that she has to do for those numbers are then given to the respective entities in this case, as we mentioned, the borough. Um, and then what we see on our bill list is the actual defense of the borough, cutting. Um, and then what we see on our bill list is the actual refunds of the borough cutting those checks. Um, so we have a lot of administrative work, which of those, and as you can imagine, what's going on in the county. Um, there's quite a lot of those that range from a couple hundred dollars. A big reason why our refunds this year are so high, um, we had two properties in particular that were massive refunds. Um, South Hill Square appealed, it was a hundred fifty thousand dollars refunds across three tax years. Um, and then those recent, you have to see Village, I'm appealed for two tax years, uh, it was just under twenty thousand, it's only twenty-four percent. Um, but I feel on those two large properties, um, I'm sure some of you may have yourself appealed your, your tax, uh, assessment. And we see that, which is, uh, the tax collector, even as we.
Is that, we, we have, between the world, uh, I think, uh, time, I guess, but. Until, until how many, it doesn't.
I, 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 until, correct, until the council, that council, how many doesn't, or it's second, um, it's like the big, this, uh, this, um, most recently, like, two days ago, about, now they're calling it a neighbor. The common level ratio, um, believe you, um, and then the common level ratio itself keeps dropping already, it was the six, and hopefully it went to the sixties, and now it's been like four. Uh, so there's been a lot of variation happening, there are a lot of different parts, and losses, uh, which should have the county, so, um, I don't see it.
So we gave that a motion, we, uh, those, uh, those, uh, for the, uh, conversation, the tax. Two seconds.
And then next up, my report, I have two grants, uh, for the local share, every town, companies that we've gotten previously. Uh, first, I have the application, uh, for the public truck, so, um, and it's, you have that in your letter, I would ask for motion to re- and get his entire. A resolution applying for a local share assessment grant, be resolved that Whitehall Borough, Allen County hereby requests to seek by local share assessment grant of one hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars, unwell finding an authority, and use the acquisition of a public truck. We have further resolved that, uh, certified designated, uh, board's, or manager, and then the J vote, president, and the officials, next, all documents and agreements. With Whitehall Borough, the Commonwealth Finance Authority, can facilitate assistance, uh, in this, uh, in the requesting grant. By including, uh, I, for, and works, who is certainly qualified secretary of Whitehall Borough, Allen County, Louisiana. Hereby certified, uh, the foregoing is truly correct copy of the resolution, fully adopted by the board, and council, and Whitehall, and regularly, uh, since number eighteen, two thousand twenty-four. Said resolution will be forwarded in minutes to Whitehall, in minutes, in fact, as of this date. In witness thereof, I, for, and, 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 and. I will need our person, which should, should adopt resolution, ten to one. So, sir. Yes, it is a report, uh, Ms. Wolf, is it you?
Yes.
This is Iker? Yes. Mrs. Chetty?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Zobrowski?
Yes.
Yes.
And another resolution toward a local share assessment grant, and this one is for the A B line pathway, and how it's, or, asking motion. We get the next one. A resolution applying for a local share assessment grant, be resolved that Whitehall Borough, Allen County, hereby request, seek by local share assessment grant of one hundred thousand three hundred eighty dollars, with the Commonwealth Finance Authority, use installation of the A B line, uh, walkway, and island. We further resolve that the appointed, hereby designated, uh, board's, or manager, and then the J vote, president, and the officials, next, all documents and agreements with Whitehall Borough, the Commonwealth Finance Authority, can facilitate and assist, uh, in the requesting grant. I, for, and works, who is fully qualified secretary of Whitehall Borough, Allen County, Louisiana. Hereby certified, uh, the foregoing is truly correct copy of the resolution, fully adopted by the board, and council, and Whitehall, and regularly, uh, since number eighteen, two thousand twenty-four. Said resolution will be forwarded in minutes to Whitehall, in minutes, in fact, as of this date. In witness thereof, I, for, and, 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 and. As for, uh, motion to, uh, resolution. Ms. Wolf?
Yeah?
This is the view?
Yes.
This is Iker?
Yes.
Mr. Chetty?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Zobrowski?
Yes.
Yes.
Next up on my report, just an update, uh, on the administrative side, uh, the administrative backline, which I'm sure many of you use. Uh, has been the process of being moved from a traditional phone backline to an electronic E-backline. Uh, there will be no disruption to service, change in any of our number, notes will change from users on either end, uh, but the cost savings for this are forty-five dollars a month. Um, backs lines are pretty expensive. Uh, so, just wanted to put that out there, Whitehall Public Library and the police will retain their traditional lines, and will retain their unique needs. And then last but not least, uh, I unfortunately have to announce that Alyssa P. from the Shade Tree Commission, um, has noted that she will not be sitting another four-year term, um, on the Shade, Shade Tree Commission. Uh, her term ends the end of this year, so it will be a vacancy, uh, and I ask that council advertise, authorize advertising, and hold this vacancy.
I, I object, I object not to the resignation, you're, you're done a wonderful service. However, what happens when people will advertise the, um, uh, the vacancies around this borough, even if it's for a, um, vacancy in any of the, uh, the wards, excuse me, or commissions, it has to go through Ms. Wards and Ms. Wards alone. So I, I do not want that to be the case in this case, because I, I think that this is, should be, um, an organization that should be able to grow organically and be able to, to discuss these things with current members of the Shade Tree Commission, if they wish to, to serve with, uh, the Shade Tree Commission. So I'm gonna vote no, for that reason.
I'm not opposed to, um, the Shade Tree Commission bringing a recommendation to us, I don't know if that would be better suited for you.
Exactly, it should not be a, a matter of, um, the borough council to, to, uh, decide, and it should not be a matter of the, the borough manager to go ahead and screen those, uh.
The motion is not to make any decision. It's to advertise. The motion is just to advertise, to let people know that there is a vacancy.
Yeah, yeah, so, so much for that.
Did we have a, did we have something like this?
This motion is out.
Okay, all pairs, are you all right?
Aye.
Close?
No.
Okay, so it's, it's one of the.
Oh, I'm not opposed, I want to, do you have anything you'd like to say, as a representative of the Shade Tree? Or advertising?
Yes, we, we get the Whitehall Borough, our, uh, we, we do get inquiries, station, who petition ourselves, and, uh, petitions. So we pass the, uh, to the, uh, as a, because, as, as I, so, we are aware of the skills, we are, we are, we should, we should. So I would say, it's a partnership, and if it works well, um, you don't have a problem with it.
But just a comment, at least, Gray, I actually met this woman, uh, about a number of breaks, they, they were partnering on, she was, she, at the Shade Tree Commission, or, or, assets, especially in this break, break season. Uh, and one of the things that is great, before we have a day, is that they are looking for a different type of all-injured than they previously had. And I asked her to send language for skill set, there will be course, that we can advertise, or, or, in their, so, I'm going to, here and offer.
Thank you, Donna, thank you. Okay, uh, before we move on.
Well, I have.
Okay, assistant manager.
You know what, that's what it's.
The meeting reports.
Wait, wait, before you move on, I think we have a properly, uh, this is a phenomenal, uh, borough.
That really is.
Borough, uh, bulletin, and this, uh, finally, uh, I, I, you know, and I've been, I've been reading it, and I've been saying, wow. So I didn't know if it ever came up, Alyssa, but I think we should be, it's, uh.
It's not the ball, so they can see.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the, uh, community reports, public works, what's up?
All right, uh, as of standard practice, I did not discuss anything with any member of the, um, public works staff, because only, um, the, uh, borough manager, and the borough manager alone may do so. I have respected her wishes and the wishes of this council to go ahead and make sure that, uh, there is the hiring process and the advertisement of the hiring process, and the decision to not advertise in a public, uh, for a public works laborer. However, two individuals had come up to me to say, hey, I put in an a, an application for that, what is the status? I had, had to say, whoa, I have nothing to do with that, that's all Ms. Wards, you have to ask specifically Ms. Wards. Um, Ms. Wards has also, um, went ahead and put in for, for the bucket truck, thank you very much. Um, there has been, um, a, a number of, um, budgetary things that, that do apply across, um, what we do as a member of council, and sometimes it goes to the matter of sanitary sewage products and sewer pro, uh, projects. And as of tonight, we were talking about the Doverdale Sewage Project, where there's a tank. One of my right-to-know requests, that is under such controversy, is the fact that I would like to know why we cannot have the information presented to me, who is the person who approves all of the public works, the storm sewer, uh, and sanitary sewer budgets. The information of what was done in the Doverdale project. What is it that we are spending, we have spent, uh, three and a half million dollars on? And how much are we continuing to, to pay over premiums and interest o, over the years due to the fact that this is an adjustable rate? I have stated over the past year that this is, eh, in total, eh, if you add all the loans together, uh, approximately ten million dollars. The audit of twenty twenty-three proves me correct, that's exactly what it was. So, um, eh, as I would like the right to know, as myself, as a councilperson, as a person who has always believed in open access, open government, and open source, that it is something that I ran on, this very transparency, and by golly, I'm doing it. I am doing it. It has been noted for the record many a times that certain people have, eh, expressed interest in my right-to-know activities in a way to somehow try to, to quell, um, my ability to gain access to these records. I had to borrow the, the records that were prepared for Ms. Scheffler at her expense to discuss with our borough engineer here, the matter of Felix Drive, that was, uh, a project that got resurrected after thirteen years ago. It's not prehistoric records that we were looking for. The historical society alone should be interested in the fact that there have been all these storm sewer projects. We've got storm sewer projects that we wouldn't wish, that we would have had some records regarding whether or not, uh, that, that swell was done in, in certain ways. But we don't have those records, why? Because they were purged, they were purged, why? Because of previous council. I can't do anything about that, sir.
We're letting them.
Sir, 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 no, 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 I'm going to continue, I'm gonna continue my report. Mr. Smith, can you please distribute this paper to anyone who's interested? The public works salaries were not appropriately budgeted in the, uh, twenty twenty-four budget. Despite my many attempts to meet with finance director and to be able to explain this to Ms. Per, uh, Ms. Wards, that this is completely inappropriate to go ahead and find this material. Therefore, therefore, I am exposing, as a whistleblower, not as a representative of the borough Whitehall, I am not going to be a peer to your head of this organization. I serve the people of. Two hundred K, two hundred K, we shorted the budget, two hundred K for public works layers.
I think, I think we need some explanation here.
There's not a shortage in the budget, um, there's a typo, uh, there is, there's not a shortage, the money is there, the money is budgeted, our staff is being paid appropriately, uh, you know from them or their lives that they work. Uh, there's a typo, it was a true error, and putting the budget together, and it's a large document, only eight, one, it's corporate, it shouldn't have been, that's all. The money's there, it will be in P, it was noted, this is like brought to our attention, uh, but it is a true error, uh, it is known.
We should, uh, very well.
Budget is a plan, it's not fixed in stone, we go over in some items, we go under in some items. There's always money there to provide for the borough services, this is not an issue.
So with a hundred percent certainty, all public works, um, pensions are.
Has nothing to do with the pension. I'm gonna talk about the pension.
Pensions are basically.
I'm happy, I'm happy to talk about the pension.
No, I was just.
Okay, well, well, it was reported at the last meeting, but I'll say it again. The non-uniform pension is overfunded, so not, you know, I mean, we're, we're even, you know, we're better than, than good, with the non-uniform. The uniform is at, I believe, ninety-one percent, which is a.
I think it's a little less, but.
Little less, all right, but whatever, the statement was made that is, you know, at the highest level in terms of pension. So, and that's, yes, and that's the uniform, okay, so, so the, the item that was brought up was the, uh, had to do with the non-uniform employees, and clearly, uh, that pension is full, more than done. So there isn't an issue, and, and I, you know.
So next time around, can I come to that meeting?
You know, it's kind of.
Well, last time you said I could come, sorry. I was, I did, I thought you said you're off, you're off.
Before we got, I was, I did say something nice about public works, you said about this, okay, so, um, and I was, I was looking at under, which is over the last few years, this, uh, um, but my wife's a, my coordinator, and she'd seen pictures of an arnie or arch that was built, I don't know if some of you saw this on Facebook, it was a teaser pictures. Uh, she saw a picture, and that was the first thing she told me when she got home, was, just gotta check this out, they, but, uh, this big arnie that comes apart, and it was a part of different events around the community, uh, and we decorated it in certain ways, you know, and I just want to give, um, appreciation, um, it was what she said, all of public works was a part of this, but this story, the day, I was a big designer here, and director, and everything going on, so I appreciate the hard work that you guys were doing, it's not, it's not, this.
You just bother teaching everything you do.
Public safety report, and, um, Whitehall Borough County President, public safety members, and representatives from the Whitehall Fire Company were recently invited to attend a meeting of representatives from relevant involved boroughs and respective volunteer fire companies to discuss the state of firefighting in our municipal house. Uh, it was very informative in respect to me. state of firefighting in our municipal boroughs. It was very informative in respect to the authorities to be. I would like to call for a Public Safety Committee, I would like to call Public Safety Committee to meet with the Whitehall Fire Chief and President to further discuss this at the next Public Safety Committee meetings. Next, yeah, September twenty-fifth at five P M. Additionally, the chief reports, our two new police vehicles were delivered to Tri Salt Ford last week. They will soon be taken to the layover service to have emergency equipment and police weapons installed. These vehicles have been on order since fall of 2023. The chief request has his permissions, place orders for two 2025 Ford Police Interceptor utilities to ensure on time delivery next year. These vehicles will be purchased through the State Dad contract and no money will be due until the vehicles are delivered in 2025. So I'd like to present a motion to authorize the chief of police to order two 2025 Ford Police Interceptor utilities from Tri Salt Ford. The Plan and Commission met last Wednesday, September eleventh. The Commission discussed definitions and regulations for loaded vehicle repair shops and tobacco shops. The Commission will continue its work on prospective zoning ordinance amendments regarding uses in commercial zoning districts at its October ninth meeting. The Commission will also review a draft 2025 work plan. At the last meeting, an issue came up that I'd like to ask for council's direction. This question came up regarding from the Plan and Commission because it had a female that was sent, was made to the zoning officer, Mr. Scott DeLeve. The request was for zoning information for medical water dispensers in Whitehall. As we know, Whitehall does not have anything addressing it in the zoning code. And the Plan and Commission is looking for direction from council on this matter. So my question for council is, should we be directing the Plan and Commission to create zoning regulations for the use of medical water dispensers? I think it shouldn't happen since we're getting requests filed behind the Capitol. So can we have a really much in mind how this?
I think it's about sap.
Something on paper.
I will, the Commission knew that this was a topic that they were focused on. Another, zoning hearing board, they met last night and took the following actions. They affirmed the determination of the zoning officer of an appeal at four five four one country called Drive. The applicant appealed for denial of an accessory use building permit by the borough zoning officer pursuant to the maximum height requirements in the zoning. They also held a hearing for the case at Cast Village. The applicant requests the variance to allow an improved freezer cooler edition of Geomedia restaurant to approach into required guard. First one was denied. The hearing was just held for acceptance of the petition. Decision of All right, library, please.
Yes, I have a library for just a moment, but I also sad to announce that a member of our library board, Katia, has taken an position and will be moving out of the community. She's leaving us of state. So we are, I put a motion before the council today to appoint Melissa Jones to the library board to complete, to replace Katia's part of the term. She will complete out her term at this time. Melissa comes to us as a resident of Whitehall since two thousand and eleven. She raises her kids here. She is an active member visiting the library as well as volunteering at the library. The library board has their own extensive process of advertising any requests to be made applicants for those that are interested in serving in the library board. And they propose a Jones folder to have some time to review. So
Motion to be settled.
All right. And we have our chancellor here as our library president, library board president, to give us an update.
Okay, thank you for approving Melissa. This is Love Your Library Month and it's going very well for the library. Our Love Your Library television appearance was a nice bonus to the opportunity for the library to gin themselves off. They were on Pittsburgh Today Live. And Paula did, of course, a great job talking about the library and then hoping everyone loved the library. So that was a nice little bonus for us. The Night of Magic fundraiser is sold out. That's for this Friday. So if you didn't get your ticket, you're gonna miss out. A lot of fun. The first of three scheduled dine-ins happened last week. Three hundred and seventeen dollars was made from Plant Brothers and Penares and Chocolaté on deck for September the nineteenth and then the twenty-ninth. When you eat at those restaurants on those days and tell them you're from the library, then the library gets a percentage of the sales for that night. Local Eagle Scout candidate, Emmett Smith, has delivered three more indoor little food libraries to three of our outreach sites. That's Mother Mercy, Good Shepherd, and Tender Care. We now have little food libraries at all the parks and several other sites in Whitehall and in some of our daycare centers. It's been a great community effort with the scouts and the book drive and the zero cost because it was all through grants and then volunteer work. And as an aside, Paula did say that these boy scouts that she worked with were the best organized, the best supervised, and the hardest working volunteers she had ever had. Due to our pre-existing partnership with Pitt's Cyber Institute, originally introduced to Paula by the mayor, Whitehall Public Library was asked to partner with University of Pittsburgh on a project focused upon building upon the public trust in libraries and using the trust to foster better practices for information consumption. Whitehall Public Library is listed as a partner in their recently published resource guide. And one of our librarians, Sarah Scott, is creating a great deal of social media content for the various libraries who are involved in this to share library trust information consumption. And Pitt and W T L will be applying to present this collaborative collaboration to future library conferences. They hope to take this on the road and explain how they did it and what they're doing at the libraries. And anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Looking forward to this week.
I know.
It's exciting. It's gonna be great.
Thank you. Bingo is back. So we take a break over the summer because there's a lot going on. So our first bingo is September twenty-sixth at noon in the community room. It's ten dollars. It includes twenty games of bingo, lunch, dessert, and a bottle of water. Registration is required and there's only a few spots left. Usually, once we get into one, we don't have any spots. So if you get on the schedule now, you should be good till May. Fall Fest will take place on September twenty-eighth from eleven to four. Our first annual soup cook-off that was postponed will now be during Fall Fest at eleven o'clock. Contestants will serve up their best soups, chowders, and bisque. If you're interested in entering your soup, you can find the registration on the website. If you're interested in being a judge, you can also come. It's two dollars to participate. You receive a spoon and a voting card. And the contestants will serve you with their soups. Generation Gap is our performance from twelve to two. Our activities throughout the day include guessing a giant pumpkin, weight, grass, vendors, food, and more. Like Mr. Lucetti said, we do have our wonderfully created backdrop that we believe be using this year. If you saw the magazine from last year, our fall setup was the cover. So we're doing something a little bit different. So if you don't want to come and do the other things, you can come with your family and take some great fall photos for maybe some Christmas cards or any type of holiday that you celebrate. Lastly, the recreation in Denise at the children's library will be partnering in a Birds of a Feather from a Shiva's early intervention. Birds of a Feather is a preschool readiness playgroup. It's an inclusive playgroup. It's a learning environment for children to prepare for the transition into preschool and beyond.
I have a question. What's established on the possible pumpkin drop?
I don't know if that'll be this year. There's a lot of logistics in order to that. I did not reach out to the fire company and see if the weight of the pumpkin would be able to be supported by that. When we were at our recreation meeting, Mr. Shobrovsky did mention about doing a giant pumpkin drop. The logistics were a little bit too, it would be really cool. It would be fun. The logistics for the weight of the pumpkin, the drop, and the environment, how the items would be cleaned, because obviously, we do have a deer management problem. So cleaning and feeding the deer is not what we would love to do. So we would have to see how those items would follow. So maybe next year, but not for this year. That's definitely on the radar.
Ms. Han?
Yes.
Appreciate all you do as always.
Thank you.
For next year, you have the room. This on the agenda for 2025 is holding up the room that the Democratic Committee is
The community room?
Yes.
Everyone submits an application. It's first come, first served for the application. I, once the applications are in, they have until October eleventh, a email is sent out that once everybody's applications are in, then an approval letter will be sent.
Do you have something like on the agenda specifically that you're going to utilize?
In what regard?
Like the community.
The community room is utilized by not only just the committees, but it's used by Girl Scouts, by Historical Arts, Whitehall Arts, Whitehall Historic Society. I think we utilize it for about twenty different people. So it's just the first come, first served, and then those items will go in. After October eleventh, when everything's due, everything will be sent out. Yep.
Ms. Rose, for the board, I submitted an application, submitted to Ms. Paula. Do you get to see what you think?
It never
They didn't reach?
Never reached.
Yeah, submitted it.
I apologize.
No, I just wanted to make your room.
I don't think
Well, I spoke to Ms. Paula as well as your other colleagues.
Well, I'll talk, I'll talk.
Yes.
I'll talk, yes.
Uh, who can move on? First?
A couple things have come tonight that may be really trying to push the site along. We've talked about the cleanup of the Doverdale. We talked about delaying the whole power that's due. And I know it has to be brought up and paid for out of next year's budget. But I'd like to start doing something with steps and prospect work so that they can finish by next summer. It takes forever to go through the process. I have to, I'm going to make a motion that we put on next month's agenda to ask Gateway to start preparing plans for the project. So we're now looking at four weeks to get plans out. And if you've been to meetings, you know, after the plans go out, and we have to advertise them, they have to be prepared to be at, it takes, which I mean, three months before we can ever say go ahead with it. But if we could get it started in January, get those steps started, we may be able to finish them so that the kids can use that for summer. So I would ask for permission. What is the motion?
Motion was put on, you have ten minutes to figure it out.
Do we start preparing steps?
Okay.
We need a second.
Thank you.
I second that. But Mr. Solister, I have a question regarding that. Since a citizen had brought it up during citizens' comments, I believe that that would allow us to weigh the, well, let's put it on the agenda next time to have the engineer prepare an idea because it was gateway engineering is my understanding that condemned these very same steps. So they might actually happen to know at least a little bit of a ballpark about it to try to get the ball rolling up immediately. Just because a citizen brought it up during citizens' comments.
You can always add, we're gonna be here for a comment. The fact that the citizen brought it up doesn't affect the requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
The information.
Yes, yes. So data as a man, yes, I mean, it still stands that this is a motion to make a motion, but I'm definitely for it. And Scott, you could please prepare any information that you could for the next one that we're discussing. Thank you.
We have a motion.
You made a motion. Exactly. This is purely a motion.
Anything else?
Yes, please. That's me. Hi, I have packets. Thank you, Courtney and Melissa. Okay, so as, I'm not quite sure how much of this I have to talk about, but I am passing out packets to council at this time for the community volunteer initiative that I introduced about a month ago. We've been working on. Yes, 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 yes. I think I really want to read all of this to everybody. It's like seven pages and we all would hear them. But the purpose is to facilitate a connection between the residents of Whitehall Borough to foster a stronger community relationship and enable acts of service to assist our neighbors. Quickly, how it works. Residents wishing to volunteer to help people will register with Whitehall Borough as a volunteer. We have forms, we have online. Volunteers' contact information will be added to the database. The database will be organized by tasks. There is no fee. On the flip side, residents needing assistance will be able to register with us kind of in the same manner as somebody that needs help. We'll have a recipient identifying their needs. And then, once we have a bunch of people on this side and a bunch of people on this side, we'll be able to help match them up and furnish folks that are needing assistance with folks that are willing to assist. We are looking to start this with tasks eligible to be performed as snow removal, light landscaping, things like spring cleanup, grass cutting, and leaf cleanup. You know, leaf season is upon us, right? No indoor tasks will be performed. No tasks not explicitly listed above will be performed. I will note here, requirements is that for must have been to at least sixty-two years of age or older, or have a physical disability preventing them, or limits their ability to perform eligible tasks, or be a military veteran. They must reside in Whitehall. They do not have the resources, family, financial, friends to perform eligible tasks. We are putting the requirement for volunteers at age eighteen or above. We know that there are a lot of kids that want to volunteer and a lot of youth groups especially want to volunteer. So we do an avenue for that so that kids and groups and sports groups can sign up as long as there is an adult. That would be the way. Again, nobody's getting in house, inside. It's all outside. It is all, I think that's the session. So, council, I ask that you read the packet. Please come back with any, if there are any concerns, comments, additions. Are we able to maybe, how are we moving forward now to make this?
I would suggest that you set that council, when you have the packet, quite, not long ago, a lot later, you would give it thought. And then I think there does need to be discussion maybe to the second pleading. And then based on what the special goes, put a back, like both back, which is when they're pleading, or you would make some changes. But I would, I think the first step is to have a discussion and then we're saying
My initial concern, obviously, would be a little
Right. Well, and Herb has been involved in this process. I'm a start to help write these documents. Not only that, but I have, I would attract more insurance home. And I have real concerns as far as how this would, it would not increase free use or anything.
This was brought up by Mrs. Iker about, she went to the public works meeting. She actually had an idea exactly like this. I was wondering if it would be a great idea if the public works committee gets together and, you know, kicks us around a little more and comes back next meeting. After all, Mrs. Iker was someone to suggest that this is
I thought we talked about that in that part of public works, doing public works, volunteering public works jobs. This is not something we would ever pass.
Snow removal, light landscaping, grass cutting, and leaf cleanup. Snow removal, light landscaping, grass cutting, and leaf cleanup, or don't go hand in, in public works?
Not on private property.
Not on private property. Okay. Okay, I'll look at it then. I'd like the motion that the public works, um, meet fit together, bring some of this over.
I'm willing, of, of course, we're open to hearing suggestions of anybody.
Jeff Marksman, uh, forty-seven, seventy, first row, uh, with, uh, volunteers volunteering, we have to sign letters, I don't know if there's an ability to
There's a number, we have a packet, there are a lot of recipients and volunteers that put their own
There's
Oh, that bug's not in there. Yeah, we want to make sure everybody's protected, but, you know, in today's day and age, we have to make sure everybody, both sides are protected, both recipient, volunteer, as well as the borough. Gotta do all of this, right? To just help the neighbors. Really, that's what we're trying to do.
I think it's all dicey.
We just want to help the neighbors.
To go with, with, you know, this number of light landscaping, um, are, are the volunteers gonna have to bring their own equipment, or will that's where I was kind of in on, you know, the public, will they be borrowing public works?
No, they would not be borrowing anything. It would be between the resident volunteer and the resident recipient.
She's just in the, um, we're involved in
The, the, yeah, the, it's, it's a long time, so we need to really go facilitating the connection and then the, you know, for example, you know, Mr. Gray, Jeff, if you guys, you know, were connected, whatever that arrangement is, is we can, we're just facilitating.
We do it.
Yes, you're just saying, hey, this person's out there, could use some help, and this person wants to help. That's all we want to do.
Okay, uh, okay, anybody else?
To answer Stone's question, uh, I, I've been offering to have a public works public meeting, and it, it's, it's been declined several times. Um, uh, I am willing to actually have the public works public meeting if the next standing time would be Tuesday, the, the twenty-fourth. Mr. B, are you available?
I don't know. I don't know. I dropped it.
Okay, I'm still
I'm gonna have to go, but also, what's the agenda?
The agenda would be
Think about it, think about it, because it seems like we're just coming up with this just now, so.
Well, to, to see how, um, uh, this, uh, volunteer, uh, committee
What are you going to add to this, that was being put together in a packet, that was a lot of work done, we need going to add to it.
To see how, how the, this might be, um, helpful for, for public works, uh, items, because I've, I've suggested many, many a times that there would be people of, of certain levels of expertise.
Do you think that should have
No, not actually do, is to, to advise them to level up their skills, to, I don't know, go, maybe go to the union hall and, and participate in their trainees.
I've got a question.
I believe Miss Wood has a comment, this book of yours.
Well, that's why I hire, um, other works, the, uh, and I am, uh, members, but I appreciate very much of us getting involved in that. And this, uh, Mrs. Thomas has applied this wonderful way to facilitate, which is already explained, you know, to have the, uh, people in need to be, not the volunteers willing to give, it's nothing to do with public works.
We're in the borough, too.
Okay, for the record, yet again, it is stifled that, um, public works, uh, uh, public meeting
We don't care.
You don't care?
No.
You don't care? About public works? Okay. I am paying for the total of my right to know, um, of thirty dollars and fifty cents. I mean, it's